I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for August 8, 2011. And Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the hall?
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Swin?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Ms. Weaver, there's Addison. Mr. DeCada?
Present.
Candor. Mr. Keown?
Here.
Opera except for Ms. Weaver.
Could we please send to Senator DeAndre Joyce?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement: The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve this mission. Members of our school committee, community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity.
Thank you. Before we move to our first period of public comment, I would just point an addition to the agenda. After the Assistant Superintendent's report, the mayor will announce the appointments of the two subcommittees, Communications and Finance, through the end of the year. Having added that to the agenda, this is our period of public comment. Does anybody who'd like to come in?
I'm so pleased to be here. I wouldn't miss this meeting for the world if I were able to make it. I was disappointed to have missed the retreat, though. I was hoping to sort of be a dragonfly on the wall and sort of participate in. So I don't know whether the superintendent's report will be discussing that at all. I was looking in the daily news to see if there was, as was the case last year, some follow-up report. I did see it in the Newburyport Notes notebook. But in any event, I just wanted, I suppose related to the mission statement itself, I know that the superintendent's report will make mention of some exciting things that are happening this weekend, and I'm hoping to be there and see you there. I guess one of the things that I just wanted to bring to light was that, you know, the inspiration that the schools can bring to the community in terms of inspiring lifelong learning. And I've been working really closely with Olga McFarlane, who has myriad visitors throughout the months from places, ports unknown and parts unknown. But, you know, we're just really pleased to sort of like review and find out what's happening with the schools. But as is mentioned in one of the public hearings, or I guess it was the Budget and Finance meeting, you know, what's so exciting about, you know, the school buildings and assessing the school building needs is really what it brings to the community in terms of assessing not only learning for, you know, the younger generation, but for all of us to inspire us. So I'm excited to just sort of audit tonight, and I'll do that here on in. But I'm looking forward to, you know, an update. Thank you.
If we could move to the consent agenda, do we have any warrants?
No, we don't.
We don't have any warrants. We have minutes.
And the approval of minutes of Monday, July 11, 2011.
Second. Is there any discussion or any changes? And then, call in favor. A good chunk of the balance of the meeting is going to be taken up with some discussion and smart dates on the MSBA process and process of two schools moving forward. So I guess we initially, I'll turn that over to Mark and you can carry on with Deirdre and Dan. And I'll sit back and enjoy this conversation.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge the superintendent, Deirdre Farrell, for all her work that she's doing every week, hearing the building committee and the selection, the OPM selection committee. Because a lot is going on as we speak, and had an opportunity to sit in on interviews and watch what's happening during the building meeting, but also the selection meeting. So I want to thank Deirdre for all of her hard work, as well as Steve Burcom, but I know that Deirdre will talk about Steve. And I just wanted to do this to her so she can give an MSBA update.
In your packet, I've provided an update, and I'll also, I'll walk through that, and I've also provided two handouts for you, and I'll also walk through those as well. The first item that the memo addresses is what's referred to as enrollment design-build letters. MSBA and the City of Newburyport must agree on the enrollment forecast in order to move forward. As reported to you previously at various meetings that we've had with MSBA and phone conversations with MSBA, we were looking to understand their methodology in determining enrollment forecasts. The NOCH-MOLEN forecast, when we received the design-build letter, seemed to be fun. I did not think that the Bresnahan K3 number, as reported to you at last meeting, was solid. So I wanted to do some drill down and understand how MSBA came up with that number. So between phone calls and exchanging some data back and forth, understanding their methodology, the second Bresnahan letter came once they understood exactly what I was telling them in regards to those kindergarten numbers. It all gets down to births and the births data that gets reported by DPH. Not only do we have birth data here in Newburyport, but we're close enough to Boston where enough numbers in Boston are being reported as Newburyport residents going to Boston for delivery. And so we took a long time to kind of go through and call through that data and establish a new kindergarten baseline number. Once that kindergarten number was changed, changed the 1 through 3 obviously as well. So those two numbers, K through 3, 660 students for Bresnahan, and 1 through 3, the 500 students for Bresnahan, is up from the identified initial Bresnahan enrollment of K3, 625, and 13, 475. So the 13 is up about approximately 25 students, and the K3, that kindergarten number. And a kindergarten is always a very volatile number. If you were building a high school or building a different school, it's that kindergarten is always a very, very volatile number because you've got private kindergartens and you've got births happening in other locations. We're also very close to New Hampshire, and so anyone born in Portsmouth and/or New Hampshire Hospital isn't reported typically to DPH unless they're actually required to do so. So those enrollment numbers have been signed off by the superintendent, and the mayor and MSBA needed those to finalize their packet. So I wanted to update you on the enrollment design-build numbers.
Deirdre, if I could just ask a question at this point. At what point, where's the fork in the road where MSBA says we're going to go this path, which would be the K through 3, or this path, the 133? How do you anticipate, where is that current, but when?
I would anticipate it being early on in feasibility. You can't go too far down the road with design development, with siding, with, you know, those kinds of situations unless you know exactly what grade configurations you're going to have in your building. There's a lot of conversation about the educational program that's going to occur in your new model school. Certainly, we would need to know if that educational program is going to be servicing early intervention as well as grades K through 3, so that you can have those conversations from an educational standpoint, never mind just a pure number standpoint, helping to build it, but more so from an educational standpoint. So I would anticipate it would be early on. It's also very highly unusual that MSBA has done this. So they're hearing our advocacy. Next in the memo that I sent to you was the Request for Services, RFs, for Owners Project Manager, OPM, and the interview process. I've identified for you the two interviews for Bresnahan, one for Bresnahan and one for NOCH, that were advertised in the month of July. The first sequence of milestone dates is for Bresnahan. July 6, they were advertised in the local newspaper and the central registry, which is a requirement. They were due July 20. The selection committee finalized their rankings July 26, and the selection committee interviews were held on August 4. There were four firms that were interviewed. They're identified for you on the second page of this memo. The four firms that were interviewed were Dataless, Doran Whittier, Hury, and R.F. Walsh. They were interviewed last Thursday evening, the same date that I wrote this, so I didn't have the results of last Thursday's evening when I wrote this. I can tell you that there was a meeting scheduled on Friday evening at 5:00, but the selection committee felt as though after the interviews, they could stay in the high school library for another half an hour or so. They felt comfortable with the interviews, and Dan, jump in at any time, please. There was a lot of good conversation and sharing of information. The requirement was to rank these in order of preference, and they have been ranked as follows. Hury, number one. R.F. Walsh, number two. Doran Whittier, number three. And Dataless, number four. The next steps with these, that ranking, is to start to negotiate a contract with your first selection. The first selection is Hury. If that negotiation fails, you go to the second. If that fails, you go to the third, or you back off and say, "We want to go back out." That kind of thing. So that's the next phase in the Bresnahan Owners Project Manager, OPM, process. I spoke with the mayor on Friday and have a call into legal in regards to Culpeper and Page, knowing and providing them information as to where we are in process as far as the Bresnahan contract for OPM services is concerned. Next, right behind that, we have the NOCH-MOLEN process, and here is the timeframe listed for you. Advertised again on July 30 in the central registry and the daily news. The requests were due August 3. Selection committee was given the RFs that responded at the interview last Thursday night. They are working right now on finalizing their ranking, and that ranking is going to be due this Thursday evening, August 11, at 6:00. We have a meeting, and we'll be reviewing the ranking for the NOCH-MOLEN RFS. We had eight respondents, as I've identified here. Seven were received on time, which is a requirement. One was not received on time and cannot be considered. Any questions on that process as we move forward?
Will you be giving us a highlight of the qualifications or the reasoning behind the selections that you made? Is there some, something more qualitative, I guess, that you can give us a way of approval? We're looking at?
Sure. One of the requirements that we have is to provide MSBA with a rather detailed document. I've seen some examples that are eight, 10, 12 pages as to what the process was. So we have to prove to them that we advertise in the central register, prove to them that we advertise in the local newspaper. We have to provide them with the questions that we asked at both interviews. We have to provide them with our reference checking that has been done. So certainly, once we get through the NOCH process, that's going to be all put together, and I certainly will provide you with that information once it is put together.
I guess the reason I'm asking is right now, these are just names on paper. And I'd love to know a little bit about what's behind those names, why?
Sure. I can speak for my side and/or on behalf of the committee, and please jump right in. The four people that were interviewed were very good companies, well-known in the Commonwealth for their public building projects and particularly around schools. The submissions that they have, Mayor Holliday has that one right there for Hury. MSBA requires such significant information in the respondent's submitted to a community that include their financials, their capacity to do the job, their references, their past experiences in public construction projects. So the information that's provided to the district and/or to the city is significant in nature in regards to understanding the company, their ability to perform, their financial ability to perform, their capacity, et cetera. One of the things that I think that I looked for was capacity, particularly in the area of cost estimation. Three of the four firms had it in-house, one had it outhouse, outsourced it, if you will. So I was very pleased with the four that were selected. I think that the team that we had on the selection committee was also impressive. On the tents, we had our name tags, and then I had what their profession is. And you had structural engineer, you had OPM-L-E-E-D-A-P, which in the architects and construction world means is big. You had...
You're a law!
Lead certification. You had lead certification for three buildings, and the owner's project manager on top of all of that. You had the attorney. So the people sitting in front of us, when people were asking a question, you knew your audience and you knew, and certainly right back here, we've got MSBA also observing the interview. After the interviews were done, MSBA stayed for a little while. Members asked questions of MSBA that they had. He was very helpful in answering those questions, but not providing guidance as far as who and what and where and those kinds of things. So from my perspective, it was capacity, similar jobs in the Commonwealth. They are doing the only other model school, elementary model school in Douglas, and they're also doing a renovation in addition in Douglas to their intermediate school. So certainly, they had the capacity, they had the experience, they have the financials in regards to, the company is 850-strong across the country, and so the resources that they could tap if they needed to tap those resources. R.F. Walsh is similar, they have the capacity to. I think from my perspective, in the interview, there was just a real good vibe to Hury and to the gentleman and the project team. They were required to bring the project team that would be the project team here in Newburyport, so that you got to meet them, you got to have a conversation with them. They really started, each one of them with a sales pitch, and I kind of cut that off in, you know, after about 10 minutes, once we got to know them a little bit, because we had such good questions that would call out some good conversation that I think that that generated.
Absolutely. Deirdre did a fantastic job, actually, of disappointing them a little bit right in the beginning, because there was only so much time. And the questions we had, we're definitely going to eat up a good percentage of that hour. And Deirdre did a great job, tactfully cutting that presentation off, so we could get down to the needed questions that we have. I, too, am very pleased with Hury. I thought, to be honest with you, I thought A1 of the four finalists that we chose, which by the way, I don't know, this evaluation criteria, which everybody is welcome to check out, these are the things that we culled out of this and ranked for each, each one that gave a proposal. We were able to reference N's and then grade them between 0 and 2. That's how we came up with four.
Let me just jump right in on that, if it's all right, Dan. That right there are the criteria that we evaluated all the requests for proposals on, and it's in the actual RFS document. So we were required to tell every vendor that potentially responded what criteria we were going to rank them on, what the weight of that criteria we were going to rate them on, and what the ratings scale was. And that was all within the RFS, so they knew coming in what they were going to be evaluated on.
And just to move on, one comment about Hury that I think Donald would definitely appreciate, because I was very impressed with it. Clerk of the Works, who is the construction site supervisor, you know, you end up with a bond company at some point if a contractor goes out of business, and you're going to deal with insurance, that contractor's insurance company. Well, their clerk of the works organization is so well documented that he is able to go to the bond company on seven different occasions and recover losses from the bond company because his documentation is so organized and so well put together. I thought that was an impressive aspect of Hury.
So that all the projects that they were working on in that regards were still on time and under budget?
Right. Exactly. Because of this company's organization. And they impressed me as tremendous leaders. They were actually able to get a, what was the name of the company that would never come east of Worcester?
Oh.
They got a construction company to come up to the East Coast of Massachusetts. It's one of the best construction companies in the country, and they were able to get this company to finish a job with a contractor and gun belly up on it, because they have tremendous influence across the country with good contractors, good relationships with good contractors. And there's a lot of depth to this company. Some of these companies were literally four or five people tops, others have a little bit more depth. This one, I thought, has the most depth, without a doubt. It was great. It's a great process, and again, I can't speak enough for Deirdre and Steve, as well as the composition of the committee, the selection committee itself. I mean, Tom Jones is just a wealth of knowledge, as well as Lisa, Scott, Sarah, John, Deirdre and Steve.
You were selected for just those reasons?
Yeah. Great group, and I really think we got the best possible selection from that process.
Thank you. That helps.
You're welcome. You're quite welcome. And again, once we finalize this report, we haven't started it yet, but once we finalize the report, you definitely will be getting a copy of that as well.
Does anybody else have any questions on the process?
So I might have missed this, I'm really sorry. Did you make a decision yet, or you're sending out contracts?
On the Bresnahan.
So Bresnahan, the ranking has been completed.
Right.
And the next step would be to start negotiations with the owner. In speaking with Mayor Holliday on Friday, I got the name of the city solicitor and the number of the city solicitor to start to update the city solicitor on where we are with that process. So that's moving along, and I've contacted all four companies. I saved Hury for last, figured I could end Friday on a good note. They were thrilled, absolutely thrilled. Look forward to these discussions that we have. In the meantime, we still have NOCH-MOLEN to go through. We're going to rank those on Thursday, and then potentially, we're going to have contract negotiations going on at the same time for both OPMs. The contract negotiations, MSBA has a template contract, which is part of the RFS, that all of the respondents have to agree that they have no problem with it already in their cover letter. So they've reviewed the template contract. The focus on the negotiations are scope and fees. So that's moving forward.
I have one more question after Bresnahan the other time.
It's okay. You can raise it twice now if you feel like it.
I don't know how to, whether the Owners Project Manager, does it have to be two separate companies? Can it be one company overseeing both? Or...
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
It can be one. It can be one?
Oh, okay.
It can be two?
Okay.
And it can be one.
It would be two separate teams from the one company, right?
There would be two separate teams, dependent on what makes sense. It could be an overlap. Right now, for example, the Douglas project that has a new model elementary school and renovations to their intermediate school has, is in one pipeline. How it got into one pipeline, I have no idea. We've got to call into their town manager to see how it got into one pipeline. They've got to keep the project separate from a bookkeeping perspective because the reimbursement rates are different.
How's it get into one pipeline?
Because we're in two, and we're instinctively in two. But they have one OPM for both, but they are in one pipeline. In our conversations after the interviews with MSBA, nothing precludes the city from having either two separate or one for both.
Cheryl, just to answer, maybe better answer your question, it should be noted that the companies that applied, that returned the RFS for the Bresnahan, it's the same company.
Minus one, right?
Minus a couple.
Minus three, but one is disqualified because they didn't meet the time.
Okay.
So right from the get-go, we knew there was a chance it could be, it's possible.
So you're dealing with pretty much the same people in both processes?
We're re-ranking them, though. I mean, the proposals are slightly different for the different projects, but we'll see how that happens, how it falls out when they're ranked.
There are definitely two separate projects. One's building a new, no site acquisition, close, no swing spot, space. Renovations in additions to a middle school where there won't be swing. So what's your experience with that as opposed to your experience with this? And if it comes out that you have one or that you have two, you're allowed under MSBA rules to have either set up?
I mean, they have ultimate approval anyways.
They do.
So when will we know?
Know...
MSBA deadlines, who the OPMs are?
We have to submit to MSBA by August 19, August 26, at the absolute positive latest, the negotiated contract with the OPMs for both projects.
Okay.
And who's negotiating that contract?
That contract. We talked a little bit about the building committee meeting. I don't know if you want to report out on that?
It has to be signed by the mayor, but we're using our legal. It's really a template, anyway, that, you know, MSBA uses with, you know, tweaking it for specificity for the individual projects. But, you know, we'll have, certainly have legal counsel work with us on that, and then, you know, as the CEO, if you will, of the city, then the one who can interest into these kinds of binding contracts that I would sign. So we'll...
I think we talked about having the selection committee because you've got Tom and John and Sarah and Scott. You know, this is what Scott does. Also have them, you know, they have reviewed the template because it's been part of the RFS, so they're familiar with it. I think that they'll also be helpful to identify, you know, the range of fees, you know, does that make sense for a new school as opposed to an adreno? What might that look like? Are there pros, what are the pros and cons to one OPM versus two? And I think that this group, this is a key group because they're so entrenched in the building, or rather, in the building business, if you will. Thank you. The last part of this agenda, or memo to you, talks about the school committee meeting, I'm sorry, school building committee meeting that we had on August 1. I attached the agenda to that meeting for your information so that you can see what was discussed. Our next meeting is August 16 at 7:00 at City Hall. Also included in your packet was this tabulation. Also included in your packet was this tabulation sheet. This is one spreadsheet in a workbook that is a total spreadsheet for you. That totals the document that Dan had had. Each member, selection committee member, was required to go through the criteria and add that all up. We put it in spreadsheets, and what you're seeing is the total for every respondent. Because you have homework. So you can see that this has the actual criteria, 12 components. They're all totaled, and you can see exactly how we scored them. You can see by the total score, it became clear, once we started adding everybody's input, it became clear that the four were just separated rather quickly. But that is additionally how we got to make the determination on who to interview, and then once we interviewed the selection from there. This would be the same spreadsheet and same methodology used to rank the Knock-Mo-Lan OPM.
And I hope you all take note of the fact that I kept up with the big boys on the score. I wasn't that far off.
I know it's that. I'm going to do a regression analysis of the score.
Can I get this back to you?
Yeah, he's been working on this.
Yeah. Checking it out.
I thought it was pretty interesting how, you know, consistent the scoring was across the board. As they worked independently on these projects.
Why, can I ask the why some, like Mr. O'Connell, his school is grossly underinflated as compared to some other schools?
We teased him about that. He is more critical, and he admitted to that. And then, but they're consistently low across the board. So each evaluator was consistent within their valuing, if you will, of the numerically?
Well, also, you want to take into account that the numbers are zero, one, and two.
Yeah.
Zero being not advantageous. So if Mr. O'Connell found that not advantageous, that's devastating to a score because it's when it weighs its time zero.
Did you consider, when you tabulated your final tabulation, throw out the high and the low?
Yes, actually.
I did.
I actually went in here closer than anybody else.
We actually did. Steve and I threw out the high and threw out the low, and the ranking came the same four. After throwing out the high and the low.
No, because I know there's just one point difference between here and Walsh if you do that.
Yeah, Walsh, well, you've got to remember, this score is pre-interview.
Right.
The interview is really what kind of sealed it for us. And they were dramatically different interviews.
Yes, they were.
I'm familiar with a number of these outfits from attending the Mass Association School Superintendent's, Mass Association School Committees, conferences. I've met the folks at Hiri back in 2007. They are a well-resourced group, so.
Yeah, I mean, these companies, I mean, not only do they do a good job, they actually have a lot of notable heroism when they're just coming into a completely dysfunctional project and pulling it into shape and then square it away. They've got quite a track record of that. I mean, there's a lot of documentation on care of all that, everything like that. And, you know, where there are those rare occasions that they do go over budget or not on time, I mean, there are generally pretty decent explanations as to why, you know, unforeseen conditions, soil conditions, things like that.
I guess I just wanted to ask, in the original email I had sent out to the building committee, I had Hiri, whether or not we met on the first at the Knock. And I didn't know if, I didn't know how familiar members of the selection committee are with Brezner. I didn't know if it would make sense for us to meet there on the 16th instead. So because we still have time to figure that out, it just, I think, if we build them some time to walk through the building, because I'm not sure everyone is, you know, as familiar with the status of the scores they should be. If not, we can still, we'll go back to City Hall if there's any issue with that.
Check with Kathy and Mary.
That's an interesting point. Was there a site visit for the OPM candidates to the Knock?
Yes.
There was? Was that attended?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. You had the same players, if you will, that you had at Brezner's that had responded.
We have another item that you are presenting to us for vote. Have you been to MSBA or the Center of York or Deirdre?
As you can see, the two links to the RFSes for the Brezner hand school and then the one for the Knock-Mo-Lan school were provided to. One of the requirements that MSBA has is that the school committee approve the RFSes, and actually, I have to submit the vote during this documentation proving we've gone through all the steps in our process. I had thought I had put this on the agenda last school committee meeting. My apologies, I did not, and that's why it's being brought to you forward at this juncture.
Well, for the purposes of discussion, we can take them individually, I would assume you prefer.
Yes.
We have a motion that the school committee approved the RFS for the Brezner project. Give me a second. Discussion.
I would just like to commend Deirdre for her leadership in this process. It is, as you can see, we had forewarned you that it was going to be a very tight, difficult time crunch process. And your question would be initially about being chair, I said, and there's no one else who could manage this process but you in terms of you and Steve. And so together, they have just, I think, done a exemplary job today in terms of representing, getting the information together for the school committee, pulling, you know, working with me on solidifying the school building committee, followed by the selection committee. And here we are with really solid, you know, proposals for this process, and I'm just, I'm very, very pleased with where we are today in very short period of time.
I'd like to second that, while being on the building committee and the selection committee, I can't say enough. And you've embraced the process too. Instead of complaining about how quick it is, you've embraced it. You actually identified why they're doing what they're doing and kept us all in check and getting, I think, decent meetings and directing the people well.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Additional comments or conversation?
In reading through these proposals, I just want to add one, put a little piece to it. Reading through these requests, obviously very, very comprehensive, you touch on everything. It's not light reading by any stretch of the imagination, but what I was impressed was I knew that you were working on the template, but I could not tell, reading through them, where the template ended and where the new report review started. So that all of the changes to that template were integrated, were very, I think, a very good way, which makes it a stronger document, if that is what you're using to use as the starting point to evaluate the proposals that you've got prepared documents ago with your actions.
For those of you watching, of course, you should know that these, the Knock document is 69 pages, and the Brezner document is 65 pages. That's a lot of work. I actually would say that I appreciated that as part of the document, the original submissions, the statements of need are attached, which I think present a very good reminder of why we are involved in this. Probably for Deirdre's purposes, if there's no other comments, we should probably do this as a roll call vote. Mrs. Kennedy, Julie?
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Mr. Keel?
Yes.
Mrs. Manis, looking for an absent. Do I have another motion for us?
Motion to approve the RFS for the OPM of the Knock-Mo-Lan school renovation project.
A second.
Second.
Discussion questions? Hiri, none. Not a hint, not a whisper.
Just a job well done.
Just a job well done. Can I sign and leave? Mrs. Kennedy, Julie, call over here.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Mr. Keel?
Yes.
Motion passes, Manis looking for an absent.
The RFS is available?
Yes.
So the RFS is available on the website?
Yes.
And we passed another milestone in moving forward. 26 to go.
Just about 26.
I think so.
But you know, the first couple of milestones really are the hardest. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the transportation contract. We had a memo in our packet to that effect, so you could potentially add to that.
I'm very pleased with the results of this bid. I've provided you with the bid numbers for the first three years. This bid was a 30B bid as required by Mass General Law for public bidding. You can award for three years, and then at that fourth year, I have to come to you and make a recommendation to you whether to award the fourth year, and then subsequently the fifth year as well. As you know, although I had the same agreement in the previous bid, market conditions changed so that we could be more competitive, so I did not recommend to you that fourth year. We sent it out again. This represents a 13.6% decrease in our current, our transportation costs for FY9, FY10. So I couldn't be more pleased with the results. In fact, the last year, 2015, 2016, if this is awarded by the school committee for $601,920, it will be a $5,000 less cost than the $606,000 for 2010, 2011. So it is a significant savings to the community, a significant savings to the district. And I would need your vote to award the regular transportation for Newburyport Public Schools, Salter Transportation for three years.
So move. Second. Discussion.
Does this impact any of our transportation fees?
No, it does not. We budgeted a particular amount of revenue. We've reached that amount of revenue as of today, once it was all calculated and added up. So it does not impact the revenue forecast regarding transportation fees.
Is it, is it safe to assume then that our transportation fees for four families shouldn't go up in the next four years?
I think that's a philosophical conversation for the committee. If our transportation costs have been decreased, then do you take a look at fees and not increase them? Do you take a look at fees and decrease them? It's that same old conversation we had with school choice. We were addicted to school choice years ago, you know, 1.5 million, 1.6 million. You can't get rid of choice then. It's the same kind of conversation with fees. You collect $120,000 worth of fees each year. That offsets certainly transportation, but your budget as a whole. So if you eliminate them or reduce them, you've got to make that somewhere else in your budget. But certainly, that's a conversation for the committee during next budget season. But it does make sense, I mean, again, it's a philosophical conversation for the committee, but it does make sense if our costs aren't increasing over the next five years, although bus transportation fees are a revenue source, your costs aren't going up for that service.
Does this anticipate a change in our campuses? If the building, you know, the new Brezner is built, obviously, the bus routes are going to change. I don't know if we'll need fewer buses or more buses, but was that part of this conversation?
Can I add to that question, because I think you can respond to it as well? Does this reflect the changes in the numbers of students that we're now dealing with? That you're projecting going forward, especially at the lower elementary levels?
Yes. It takes into consideration the number of students that we anticipate transporting next year. So that's one variable you look at. How many students in totality do we have? And then what's our ridership over the last few years on average? And how many buses do we need to service that ridership on average? And so that information was provided to the vendors that took out this request for In the bid itself, because it's an MGL Chapter 30B bid, you can reduce the bid by 20% or you can add to the bid by 20%. So that takes into account any fluctuation.
We can do that.
We can do that legally under 30B.
Okay.
If it's greater than 20%, one way or the other, it has to go out to bid, rebid. Additionally, within the contract documents, there is a response by the vendor that talks about adding buses at what cost and then deleting buses at what cost. Last year, if you recall, we added a middle school fifth bus because they were overcrowded the first two weeks of school. So we waited until things calmed down, knew that it wasn't going to even itself out. We had too many middle school kids riding three to receipt. Elementary, it's okay, middle school, it's not. So we added a fifth bus last year. That I was, that cost is identified within the bid. So you can add and you can delete based on ridership. Registrations, by the way, have occurred. We had one in June, we had one in August. They have occurred, and we're working on giving Salter the ridership information so that they can design the routes. The routes for the past few years really haven't changed too much.
Any other questions? It's really rare that we, these days, that we get an opportunity to vote on a contract that costs become less. That's my comment. If there are no further comments, well, in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Manis looking for an absent. We have our second period of public comment, and we have additional members of the public who's joined us.
I'd like to segue, and I'm not certain if it would be improper to sort of use this last point on transportation and vehicles in general and school buses, because I'm harking back to Dr. Orlando and Matt Orlando's viewpoint, talking about getting on the bus and the exciting things of place-based education and education itself. And I wasn't at this, the school committee meeting that I just participated in the public conversation and went over to the city council meeting. I wasn't here, but, and actually hadn't the opportunity because I sort of was dealing with some other things to review that particular meeting. But I did have a conversation with somebody who made public comment and expressed a concern that I had actually shared with Dr. Kerbel about the, in preparation for the public hearing on June 6th, and the issue about engaging the public and informing the public throughout this process, the MSBA process. And I guess, I'm hoping that there's a reconsideration about the use of consultant for promotion and how to engage that, especially since the OPM will be such a pivotal, you know, entity, whether or not it's one or two. Because I can't begin to tell you the echo, the resounding echo in the community in terms of use of consultants. And I, after one of the meetings early on... And I, after one of the meetings early on, that, that meeting that was, I guess, the Wednesday before the second of, at the public hearing, you know, I had heard there was some discussion in school committee, you know, about the fact that there was discussion at that particular meeting. And I brought it up to the person who made public comment on, you know, the, the 11th of July. And, you know, obviously there were, there was some concern voiced. I just keep hearing it all, you know, frequently. And, you know, I know that there'll be some who are policy wonks and would love to have this material that's, that you have in your, your hands posted online and review it. And I know that there's been, you know, express comments about other issues that, you know, you really just need bullets for people. But we need to sort of really figure out a way of engaging. And even during the master planning process, you know, a decade ago, although there was some issue with a consultant that was really engaging community, I can't begin to tell you with somebody, you know, trusting such as yourself, like the mayor, our leaders, when Councilor Jones stood up in city council meeting, that direct engagement rather than having somebody in an entity as promotion of something, I think is, is something that you really need to consider. And I'm not certain whether or not the, the building committee or where that conversation is right now, but I'd like to sort of really reinforce, because especially since I felt rather guilty, because I kind of like whispered at one of the meetings that, oh, you know, this was a concern. And apparently it was brought up at the last, at that meeting on July 11th. So there's, there's some discussion out there. You know, I'm, I'm sure we could probably, maybe if you had a meeting just specific to that about engaging the community. I know that there's members of the community who would like to sort of like really help out and, you know, so looking forward to that. There was one other thing that I wanted to think, and I'm actually now losing my train of thought, so I won't say anything. But, you know, I, I, anything that, any material that can go up there on the website, you know, and, you know, in advance, particularly, I'm not certain if, when the superintendent and the assistant superintendent talk about the meeting, is it on the 16th? What that'll entail and whether that's a public meeting. But, you know, there, there are those people who are out there that you're surprised when you talk with them and who express concern because of the financial, financial aspect of this. But, you know, as you know, and I know Deanna's nodding here, we had a conversation about maybe just as what you had said about engaging the community and maybe even using video. Almost need Smell-O-Vision to like really let people know. You know, people, people such as myself who don't have children in the schools and then you go in there, you know, with the, you know, the rehearsals at, at the, at the Knock Middle School with, with the reunion band. The first time I was like in there and I was just like, oh. I mean, I thought this just, I thought it was just the breath that in the, in the, you know, the components he added, you know, that smelt like that at one point. So it's just like such a shock. And people in the community, those of us who don't, you know, really get indoors, really almost need that, that, you know, that awareness. A lot of people just have that, well, why don't you just fix it up? And it really is throwing, you know, good money after, after bad. So, but, you know, I can't begin to tell you the trust and the level of trust for our leaders. And instead of having that, that conduit, especially if we have a really key OPM that, that you're speaking very highly with, that's a pivotal position in it. And then supporting people in the community and really, you know, but I'm looking forward to those conversations and seeing how that can be sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Hearing no additional public comments, turn to Mark from Kerbel for superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. I have, I have quite a few items to go over, and I'll try to be brief. Yes, a few days ago last week, I attended the Great Alliance Educational Collaborative Board of Directors meeting. And the, there's going to be a change in the executive director. The executive director, as of this Friday, well, this Friday will be his last day, okay? There will be an executive director search. There'll be an interim search at first and then a full search for an executive director. I would, one of the questions I asked was how much money has Newburyport contributed or paid towards Gillette? And so just want to read up some statistics for you, excuse me. Tuition for two students at the Coastal Alternative Collaborative is about $63,000. Five students to attend a camp was $23,000. Sisterate technology is $9,000. So that just gives you a sense. That's actually less than we paid this year. I will say, considering the scrutiny of the Barack Education Collaborative, NBC, and all the information, all the information in the news, I think that the board of directors are really keying in on Gillette. So therefore, all the superintendents in the area are just paying attention to budget and programs. So just want to know that. Summer professional development, there are quite a few teachers who were involved, not to go through all the projects, but actually was walking through the, the Knock Middle School library and saw a lot of teachers working together. And I realized they were, they were doing a lot of self-study and study groups, whether they're looking at developing curriculum for new therapeutic classroom, or it would be fine redesigning the American literature, or they're working out AP calculus, and a lot of other things, new health curriculum. I had an opportunity to attend the class of 1953, their annual picnic. And what a great group of people. This is my second one. I know who I did was been to the reunion once in the past. This class donated $2,700 to the NDF and $1,000 to the high school library. They were always raising money and great people. And so I thank them for all that they've done so far. Sherry Pearl of the Newburyport Framers donated over $1,500 worth of art supplies to all of our five schools. Want to speak about Yankee homecoming. I truly had an opportunity to be involved with two races, a 5K, which is 3.1 miles. It was Oakland Ave. I made it. Once I got past Oakland Ave, I knew I was home free.
So many people have said that.
I'm right here.
It was, so I will tell you, it was really interesting. Preparing for that race, I ran up a hill in North Andover. I couldn't walk for two days. How am I going to take Oakland Ave? I want to thank all the people that yelled out and so supportive. Then it was the bed race on Federal, Federal Street, Federal Street. And that was my first experience with a bed race. And, you know, I'll tell you, the forefathers really, you know, it was every night when they came up with this one. But the, I really want to say, with all seriousness, the camaraderie spirit and what was going on that night, at least for me, there were 22, 22 beds and thousands of people. It was really great. Of course, Deidre and Dan are having interviews that night for the OPM, and it is yours truly on a bed. And my wife said to me, of course, I saw the, I saw the video, a little of the video clip. And I showed my wife, and she says, you're looking at it over and over. Is there something you want to tell me? Yes. It was kind of surreal, because as it's happening, you say to yourself, why is this happening? Thousands of people, I've been Superman costume and these five parents are pushing this thing. But camaraderie is, I'm saying, the spirit in that, I, I could say that for all of those that were involved in the bed race, this is what makes Newburyport a special place. And you can't lose sight of that. I mean, that's why, that's why it's done. Okay? And that's why a lot of people showed up because of something special. And so it was, it was, it was really an unique experience for me. I do want to say, God bless the three, four, and five-year-old kids. I came out of the bathroom in my outfit. And one girl, when they go in my hand, I said, you want to go for a fly? You want to fly around with me? She's, no, she was too afraid, afraid. So was I. I thought she would say yes.
You look like you were holding off a dear life in the paint where you were just getting up.
I arrived late. And if I had a moment, for every person who said, did you see the superintendent? That was the superintendent! And that Superman outfit.
Julie, they call that true grit.
You look like you were holding off a dear life.
I want to talk about the walk back, the, the walk back in time. It's a fundraiser for the music program at the middle school. Had an opportunity today to meet with members of the Shadows and the members of the reunion band. And it's actually going to be an acoustic band, too. It's going to be, it's going to be quite the musical night. It's at the Elpsall, August 13th, and tickets at $25 each is still on sale. And can't say enough about these gentlemen that graduated in the late 60s and 70s that expressed themselves to reporter today and just talked about the, the opportunity to give back to the community. It's really, really, you know, quite the session today. August 14th is again, okay? And Dominique has been, Dominique Dears has been working exceptionally hard to put together this social event. And that's, starts at 12 o'clock on Sunday and probably will be going around 2 o'clock. So I appreciate anyone who wants to join us. I'll be there with my wife at the game. The NDF is sponsoring on August 28th, the Summer Musical Festival at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm. It's a full-day festival for families. And so I encourage everyone in Newburyport to come off of that event. On September 1st is a networking lunch fair. We have a full professional day for our teachers on September 1st. It's our second day back. As part of that day, we're going to have this networking fair with business, businesses and community members. And I want to thank Nick for all of his effort in terms of really leading this effort on this particular day. We've had several meetings. It's going to be, it's going to be, I think, a great opportunity for businesses and teachers to come together. So if anyone's listening and wants, wants to be involved, the easiest thing would be just contact my office. I do want to move on to talk about two things. One, perfect attendance for 2010, 2011. Tom Stoller and Beth Taylor, Tom was at the middle school, Beth was at the high school, had perfect attendance. And actually, we had part-time cafeteria staff, Karen Giglio.
Giglio.
And Gail Daravan also had perfect attendance. I say that, I take it very seriously. And I can remember being in former districts when superintendent would send letters out and how I worked hard to make sure that I got to school. And sometimes it's just the logistics of the world. Sometimes you're sick, sometimes you have to be healthy. So for these folks, I appreciate the fact that they, they were in all year long. And lastly, we had the scoot committee retreat. And I thought that went exceptionally well. We had Deidre and Karen Van and Angela Bitt joined us for part of it. We were able to talk about what we want to accomplish in the coming year. We talked about our norms of interacting. We talked about how we operate, our school board meetings, and how we talk to one another, and how we should be planning, and some of the things that I could do better as a, as a superintendent in terms of these meetings. And we talked about student achievement, how that's going to be a focus, and continue our focus. And so I thought, I thought the retreat was a special day for us. And we have another retreat coming up for our school leaders on August 24th and 25th. And that's a superintendent's report. Thank you.
Any questions? Terrific. We have the assistant superintendent's report.
I want to report school choice numbers to you. In grade seven, we opened up and declared 10 slots open. We have 10 slots filled at this juncture. In grade eight, we also declared 10 slots open. Nine students have applied, but only four have registered as of today. In grade nine, we declared 30 slots open. 28 have applied. 28 students were accepted. However, it looks as though we have only 11 of those 28 actually registered as of today. We're actually contacting those slots that have been accepted to ensure that we know if, if they're coming or not because of obvious situations regarding schedules and student schedules as well. So we have 25 total definitive school choice numbers this upcoming school year, as of this point in time.
Deidre, how does that fit with our budget projection?
It's going to impact, unless we pick up a few more of the 28 that have been accepted, it's potentially going to impact our school choice budget forecast. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I'll get that for you at next report. But we were conservative in budgeting, knowing that this activity typically happens. And so I can get that for you for the meeting on the 22nd. You're welcome. The other thing I just wanted to report to you is, as you can see from coming into the building, we have preventative maintenance occurring in, in the buildings. This is the eight weeks where we tear apart every classroom, every nook, every cranny in all of our school buildings, wax everything, every floor, every nook and cranny, and then put it back together again. The custodial staff has once again done a yeoman's job under Steve's direction. And our, our staff is quite proud to open up schools, and they're proud to ensure that those schools are, are clean and, and show that they're clean. So the staff has done just an incredible job. We don't have some of the major projects that we have had in this district this particular summer, but they're doing a yeoman's job and getting ready for, for a day of school.
Thank you. Any questions, Deidre? Terrific. The last item on our agenda, we do not have an executive session this evening, is one that came up at the retreat and, and a previous school committee meeting, a discussion about reconstituting the finance and communication committee. Passed our recommendations on to the mayor, and the mayor is going to reconstitute those committees, make assignments between now, or the last, between now and January, and then reconstitute those committees in January. It's been past practice.
My communication subcommittee will consist of Nick Decanter, Dan Keel, Stephanie Weaver. Finance committee will consist of Cheryl Sweeney, Steve Cole, and Bruce Menon.
Could you tell me the communication?
Sure. Nick Decanter, Dan Keel, Stephanie Weaver.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good side of the table, bad side of the table.
I, you know, was reading your discussion around communication in your last meeting. I also think that it would be really wonderful if part of that communication sort of falls over into working with, you know, how we're going to communicate to the public about the school building projects. I did send you out an email recently letting you know that there is a meeting this Thursday night because the members of the school building committee who are on the selection committee, I reached out beyond that, because we have 22 people in the room. And so those people who aren't part of the selection committee, I asked if they would come to a series of meetings to begin just sort of tapping their brains and coming together about how we communicate these projects to the community. So on the 11th at City Hall at 7:00 is the first meeting with half of that group that can come. And as I wrote back to you, I would love all school committee members to come to either that meeting or the next one on the 23rd at 7:00 at City Hall, same thing. And then we'll begin to start looking at recruitment of additional teams and really put together the strategy that needs to happen going forward. I think for the time being, I, this is sort of the piece that I'm picking up with members of the school committee, and then I certainly will need a lot of help as we begin to roll this out as we hit the fall. So that's sort of where we are right now, starting with these two initial meetings. So I would really love to have, and I, both of them will be posted, and they'll be in the mayor's conference room at City Hall. So if, you know, any, please try and make one of those meetings. So if, you know, please try and make one of those meetings.
And in the same spirit of a conversation about the finance committee, I'm just going to report out that the mayor is very amenable to having, and has yet to be configured, having some aspect of our finance committee involved in some of the larger planning, this financial planning that's going to take place in the city. So it's yet to be worked out, but that is now being, becoming part of our, our goals and mission in that community. There being no further items on the agenda, and it being 10 minutes after 12, 10 minutes after 8:00, and no dollar bills do I see anywhere.
But you know what? It says one hour, 12 minutes. Two minutes.
Move to the journey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.